Had so many kids signed up. Why don't you roll call?
All right, we'll do, uh, is anyone on?
We don't pick.
No?
No.
Roll call for Wednesday, January seventeenth, Town Council Manager Search Committee meeting. We have Counselor Wingard, Counselor Pratmasal, Counselor. Mark.
Are you gonna call Miguel?
Yeah. Counselor Kenny and. And, uh, missing, I guess. And they're not, are they not coming?
I don't know.
For sure.
I thought Matt was coming. You could try texting him. Anyway, we'll get going because it's four.
Yep.
Right? Um, I think the first item on our agenda is an update about the SGR recruiter visit to Orono, which will be happening on the twenty ninth and thirtieth of January. And Leo and I had a great conversation in Cornell with Alyssa today. So we have some updates from that conversation and some questions back to you all based on that conversation. Let's see. Do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want to start with kind of the overall timeline? So the phone that she.
Um, I didn't have that in here. Are you okay if I get to it in a second?
Sure.
I could jump there first. I didn't, she gave us an overall timeline in the proposal, which council all got. Um, back when we started and, um, the gist was that she would be here on the twenty ninth and the thirtieth. Cornell and Leo, please jump in if I'm getting something wrong. And that the goal would be to finish the profile, the publicity brochure approximately a week after that visit at the latest and post the job at that time and have thirty days of job posting. So it sounds like the posting would go from approximately February fifth to March fifth, approximately. Correct, Leo?
Yes.
Yes. And then, um, after that, in their proposal on.
Well, sorry, during that, she did tell us that we'll get weekly updates.
Right.
Just, just numbers, numbers and kind of where they're from. And we'll also share if there's any other issues or concerns, like once a week we'll hear from her on where things are at. High level, not looking at resumes or anything like that.
And in their timeline then, on week five, which they start counting weeks, I believe, as soon as the job is posted. So on week five is when we would do the process with them of looking at all the candidates who've been submitted and reducing that down to our semifinalist list of ten to fifteen. Week eight is when we would reduce the semifinalists down to the finalists on their.
The only thing I'd add is we will review all of them. They will give us sort of two tiers as well.
Three tiers.
Three?
Three tiers. Yeah. She said there'll be a tier that's just not qualified at all, that they would suggest completely eliminating from the consideration.
Okay.
A second tier that was medium level, in their opinion, qualified, and then the ones they thought were the top qualifiers.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Um, so anyway, week five should fall somewhere between March, maybe around March eleventh, it sounds like, about when we swear in whoever our new counselor is. Maybe there'll be more than one new counselor. We don't know. Or right about then is when we would be, um, reducing the big pool down to the semifinalist, ten to fifteen. Week eight approximately is when we would reduce the semifinalist to the finalists. So quick look at a calendar puts that right on April Fool's Day. So I don't know how that bodes for us, but if the calendar works exactly like this, but this may be adjusted, these are, you know, guidelines. Um, and then that would put week twelve, which is when they typically say their finalist interviews are right at the end of April.
And just, I'll throw this out there again, you guys correct me, but I think with, when we get down to the ten to fifteen, she's gonna, they're going to provide like a book, she kind of referred to it as, where I think included in there is sort of an online interview. Maybe just all of their profile stuff that they have.
Some writing.
There's quite a.
Answering questions.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so.
Yeah.
What that, once we get to the ten to fifteen, we'll be, we'll get that kind of deeper level of those.
And most of those details are in that proposal that SGR first submitted. So if you want to look them over yourselves, you can. Um, we should have more specific dates. Hopefully it looks sounding like Leo and I will meet with Alyssa and Cornell again next week and maybe actually have specific dates for those things in mind, right? Hopefully getting closer. Um, okay, other updates was, were on the stakeholders. Uh, there had been a question from council, who was important to Alyssa to meet with when she was here? And, um, she answered that question really clearly. She said the top priorities and most important for her would be the people that the town manager would report to. So that would be us as the council. The people who report directly to the town manager, so all of our senior staff members who report directly there. Um, and then the third category she said was, um, those who interact with the position on a regular basis and are influential in town. So those are her top categories of the most important people that we schedule with her. Um, she indicated that she can do one-on-one meetings with some people where that's appropriate. Um, small groups, as Cornell had indicated to us before, three to four people is the size, I think she indicated for small groups. And then large public meetings, like, uh, we talked about a bit last week. Um, I did specifically ask because it had sort of come up in our discussion last week and my looking at people's suggestions of who stakeholders were, whether some open slots were okay to have in her schedule that were designated as, this is an open slot, no matter who you are in the community, if you don't feel like you fit in these other categories that have been promoted, but you would like to come and talk with her, you can sign up, our open slot's okay. Um, she said yes, as long as we close them twenty-four hours in advance, that she would like to know ahead of time who she's meeting with and not be blindsided, you know, in the last time period, which seemed very reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to me. She also said there was a question from staff or from council about the importance of touring or not touring and seeing town. Um, she did clarify that she is in fact a person who will meet with all of the candidates to express an interest in our job personally. So she is our recruiter in that sense also, and that seeing town and seeing the university and being driven around and or walked up to the schools or any of those things would be good.
Yep.
For her to do so that she can do her very best job selling why Orono is the most wonderful place to live, as we all know. Did I summarize that well?
Yeah, are, were you, are you gonna get into, talk about the public meetings, like thoughts?
He's gonna do that next. Will that sound good? Do you want to go first or should I?
No.
Okay, um, she, on the public meeting, um, we asked if she had a specific plan in mind. She said she's very flexible and was interested in what we wanted that public meeting to look like. Um, she said that typically, um, if she were posing questions to an open forum in a meeting like that, her four questions would be, what does an ideal candidate look like for Orono? What are the biggest challenges and opportunities facing Orono in the coming years? Uh, the third one was why Orono? Why come here? What's lovely about here? And her first one was actually why not Orono? And, uh, she said that was a useful question because it points out what could be possible barriers to overcome when recruiting and then to talk with folks there and later with council more about how do we overcome those? So that Orono, you know, is even better place for anyone looking at the job.
Um, can you, what was it? Why Orono?
Ideal candidate, what does an ideal candidate look like? What are the biggest challenges and opportunities facing Orono in the close future, some time period, three years? I don't know. Did she give a time?
She did.
Near future.
Five years, that's a good.
Um, why Orono? Why come here? What's great about Orono? And then the last one was why not Orono? And that one was really to get at what obstacles or hurdles there might be that we could address as a community to make it even more appealing place for someone to come.
Or to kind of sift through and not bother with candidate, turn something about our town's.
Yeah, I think that's why. Um, she indicated that she would want to talk with us more about this meeting. Um, and she's especially interested in like, like time limits and how we make sure that not one person dominates too much of the discussion. She was very open to small group discussions that we report out and any other kind of format. Um, she said, I asked about Zoom versus live. Depending on the format, um, she said that Zoom could happen simultaneously, especially if it was breakout groups, because those work well on Zoom, but other things like a meet and greet style where it was more walk around and chat with Alyssa informally would obviously not work well simultaneously on Zoom. Yeah, um, and Leo and I were wondering if someone else on council wanted to be the point person for planning the details of the public meeting with Alyssa, because she would like a point person to plan that.
She wasn't, I, I mean, I, I don't think she was like, this is something we always do.
Right.
This was sort of a, it felt a little bit outside of what they normally do, like.
Yeah, I agree completely, yeah.
So she was more looking like, well, what do, what do you guys want to do? We, I mean, I'm sure she can and will facilitate it and knows how to. Um, one of the, one of the things that came up was we've got two hundred and ten people on survey. Are we gonna get a different group in for the face-to-face and be able to get some new information out of these people, out of new people? Or maybe, maybe, I guess we didn't specifically ask those four questions in our survey, so, so there's that too. Um, but, um, yeah, and she was, again, open to it, not thinking like this is, this, this has to happen, but if we think it has to happen, then she would kind of look towards us a little more on what, what it actually is going to shape up like and look like.
That's an accurate summary, Leo.
I think that one of the parts of the meeting. Why you. From saying she gives a positive thing, it's not this, uh, and then maybe she people might think of stuff we have to buy that are. Something that, that would be potentially. Because most of us live here in Maine, how to open the desert and there's wonderful things to, that aren't like just sell Orono to somebody who's from a totally different place than I am. Thinking that it doesn't need to consider because it just assumes that it's everyone. So that might be something that would be a positive thing.
Yeah. I think that fits well with her third thing about why Orono. Is there a question yet?
If she wants a council point person to work with on that, I could, I could step up to that if anyone else.
Leo and I were kind of hoping you might say that, Sonia. Thank you. Seems like a skill set you have a lot of expertise in and she would clearly like.
I would love to, to buddy with Matt on that. Do you think that would be all right for Alyssa to have sort of two of us?
I'm sure. Yeah, I would think so.
There was, you know, staff wanted to. Cornell, it's feel good about meeting with Alyssa and making a plan for this.
Yeah. How do the rest of council feel about that if we say Sonia and Matt have to go ahead to plan that with Alyssa for the public meetings?
Yeah.
Cornell, could you, um, have an email with Matt and Sonia about their schedules to get something scheduled with Alyssa? Because that's coming soon. She's here less than two weeks.
For Tuesday, January.
Twenty nine, thirtieth, thirtieth, right. Twenty ninth is Monday, thirtieth.
Set a time.
No, we haven't. And that was my next question. Um, I don't know if folks saw that I randomly plunked down things in blocks on a message I sent around just to be like, if we're trying to fill up this schedule, like, these are the kinds of things that people talked about last week. So I randomly put them in. This is really like only to make people look at what fits in a schedule, not that this is what you can pass them down.
This is, this is the Tuesday night?
Yeah, so it's the second day on here. I randomly put times, but, um, I didn't know if we would want a Zoom meeting. And I guess I'm not clear still if we do, like, depends how we're structuring that meeting. The one thing I want to say is in addition to meeting with Alyssa to plan it, what I think we as a council need to decide tonight is the times so that we can start publicizing this, because to her concern about, is this going to be just the same few people who always come, you know, we have some control over that, depending on how much publicity we do and how much we reach out and do we make flyers that go around town and.
Yeah.
You know, what's being posted on our Facebook page? And the sooner we start doing that and the more exciting and fun we make it sound.
Yeah.
The more people are likely to show up.
Yeah.
Can we make a recommendation, just throw it out there?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think six thirty, seven thirty, one meeting include a, and include a, include a Zoom component to it.
Yeah.
Um, just because I.
Sounds good.
I feel like we're, you know, we might be spreading her a little thin, maybe. And she, she's open to it, but she also did acknowledge, you know, you make, if I do a twelve-hour day, I'm gonna be a little.
Exhausted.
Towards the end, I'm gonna be, uh, that.
So was that six thirty to seven thirty, one hour, or six to seven?
Uh, it's on here as six thirty, seven thirty.
I think it's on there as.
Currently it's six thirty, seven, but that's a made-up number, so it doesn't matter.
Six thirty to seven thirty. I think we can, I think we can get, you know, sort of what we need in an hour, which, I mean, as Alyssa points out, I, I imagine that we will learn many of the same things we already have learned through a survey, but I also think it is important for people, if you don't do digital things and didn't get to take the survey, to have an opportunity to come. And, um, you may learn things that we didn't expect, but, but I do think an hour is probably sufficient. So that's on that surface, since we already have a lot of pretty good data on some of these questions that she recommends. So we can go quickly through that and focus on some of the questions that we have.
And I think if you're like, you're good at facilitating and stuff, I mean, if, if it's rolling at seven thirty, then.
Yeah.
You know, roll, you know, kind of, I would, I would think.
That sounds good. And so we don't need a Zoom one because we think we can do it together. I, I just put it in their pencil, but in case we did, but.
Zoom is, is included.
Yep, got it. The only other question I have about that is, um, because Alyssa did throw out this sort of like a meet and greet idea, is there any sense to saying, come at six if you want to schmooze and just meet and greet and eat whatever? And it's, it's six thirty, we'll sit down and we'll really do the organized meeting. What do people think about that?
Gather at six for refreshments.
Meet and greet and refreshments?
Yeah.
And then the meeting part will start right at six thirty?
I like that.
Yeah.
Sounds good to people?
And because then, you know, you do get some people that may not want to speak online and they want to come early and.
Okay.
Say something. We're gonna do it right here.
I think that was our decision here. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Anyone could write a little blurb about what that is that we could start getting out all over social media and everywhere?
Awesome.
Okay. That would be great. All right. That was efficient. Thank you all. Okay, um, as far as the visits, we talked about stakeholder groups a little bit. I think we need to talk a little bit more about, um, any other publicity ways we want to get this out, by the way? Flyers? Should we make flyers and dig up?
If, if Matt makes a blurb, I can turn it into a graphic and then we'll have a combo pack that's easy to post and easy to stick around.
I'm pretty good at getting flyers out around town at this point, so I'll go on here to search the idea. Okay.
Well, back to what we were talking about before, too. If there's still laundry Matt at town.
Yeah, that was my next question is where? Because we had some question about making sure we tried to reach out to groups that might not have been reached yet or served as often or included as often. So if there are thoughts now and or if people want to email me thoughts about where flyers should go that they maybe haven't.
I think we should ask the school to send it, the RSU to send it out to their, well, I mean.
Yeah.
They've got half, well, half of the high school, that's it, are, are probably outside of our town, so. Not that they can, and, and I don't think it's important that they tap them out, but I did, they, they, if they could, it probably would make sense to send it to all our residents, not necessarily in November.
I'd be happy to ask the RSU. I can email Meredith and ask once you have it.
It's just, it's just another way to.
Okay. Anywhere else people immediately off the top of their head want things to.
I have some.
Some thoughts to send them my way. I mean, I've tried really hard to get all over town and I, in lots of places, but I'm sure there's ones that I've missed, so I love those suggestions.
Yeah.
Cornell, I'm hoping staff would be happy to print colored flyers again for me to run around and put up. Okay. Everybody feels good about that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, then as far as this longer, I don't know, I stab at all the things you all brainstormed last time about different groups we wanted to include in stakeholders. I color-coded them. They don't look so good on this copy. They look way better on the digital version. So if you have the digital version, it's easier to read. I just took everything that you all brainstormed and either put them in here, or if I didn't, highlighted it in my email. What I didn't do was take very specific groups like families or kids or, um, I don't, there's a list in my email, which I don't have access to. I didn't like make open categories. I just made open categories for anyone who was not a business owner or a um, volunteer or committee member already in town. But if people wanted something more specific, that's fine. If there's any general people categories on here you don't think should be here or need more time, or I don't know. Staff should speak up about, I figured you could organize how staff want to have their meetings on your own as long as we gave you enough blocks of time. Does that sound right? Um, I know council had said it was really important to us that both senior staff and non-senior staff had opportunities to meet with Alyssa. Um, was there anything else from a council perspective that was important to relay to staff about meeting times?
I think I just want to, I guess, reiterate Alyssa's, um, point that sort of it feels important for all senior staff to be able to be included. I think there's enough spots in there, but yeah.
If they're in groups of three or four, but if Cornell felt like it was more important or staff did to meet individually, you know, you could let us know if more blocks were needed. On the non-senior staff, I heard various suggestions over time about whether it would be like by, almost by building, like a meeting with police and fire, whoever wanted to come, and a meeting with library, down at the library, whoever wanted to come, or whether it would be each bargaining unit is invited to meet and/or, I know Public Works and WPCF are not unionized, so they would have a different window. It doesn't matter to us, just whatever works. Doesn't matter to me, however works for you guys. What do you guys feel?
I think I agree. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be sure for staff to self-organize how that seems to fit best.
I randomly sort of put people, these in slots on times, and that's the other thing. It's good to get feedback on. If there are certain categories here that you all are like, you know, the people who serve on committees, they need to be early in the morning, or the staff are flexible and can meet at any point in the day. Whereas maybe business owners, it's terrible in the evenings, or, I mean, I don't know. Like, if you see times that you think make sense, it would be good to note that also.
One thing Sarah, I might say is we have two slots for university affiliated folks. One of those might be good as a floating spot, but one of them, we may want to contact the president's office or provost's office.
Yeah.
See, we're sort of at the mercy of their schedule.
I agree. Yeah, I think we need to do that soon. I was speaking to someone who, um, works in administration on campus and they, um, recommended the exact same thing, like to reach out directly to the president's office administrative person and say, you know, would you like an executive meeting with our recruiter when they're here? And if so, who do you want at that meeting? And have that, them set that.
So if you're comfortable with that, I'll work with Cornell on that, because we did that, it's something to see what we got.
Yeah.
All right.
I think that would be great, and I can give you also the names, the person passed to me if you want them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, does that sound good to folks? Because I think that we should schedule soon. That schedule's likely to be very complicated and we'll need to plan around.
Yeah.
I think, um, otherwise I really just sort of, um, I put some business meetings early on the day and some later and sort of did the same with volunteer nonprofit groups, some early in the morning and some in the middle of the afternoon so that there were open slots at different times. How do people feel about that? No, you go.
I have a different question.
Yeah. Okay, well.
Your council's at eleven, and then councilors at one, two, three, two, three, are you, are we gonna meet with her together?
So we, we will do that only at our council meeting that night, which is at five PM. We will meet together. My understanding, and we didn't really get to talk to Alyssa about this today. A different search company, when we were doing the search company choice, said that it was important to them that they had twenty-minute slots with each counselor individually as part of their first visit. Um, and so I put enough time that those could be twenty-minute slots individually with all of us. Um, I think another option is pairs and half an hour in pairs, if she prefers that or we prefer that.
Gotcha.
Um, and I sort of made extra time because around the tour and the transporting to the university and back, because I heard counselors say they would pick up and drive back from the university or drive there. So I think what I made is enough time, even if it was twenty minutes individual and also to get her to the university, but that may not be when the university is. I mean, we'll, we'll shift those depending on what the university meetings come back as.
If we need like that, I, I don't know, but if you need a point, I'll talk to you tonight and I'll let you know. Need somebody to drive her around that Monday, I can do it.
Thanks.
You get to drive her the first Monday and possibly. But, but I, I don't know, other people want to drive.
Yeah. Staff, a question to staff too is I've been thinking from what she said about wanting to see town that like, as long as this is getting allowed, it would be great if like some of her meetings were down at the library and, you know, with meetings with Public Works, maybe she could actually go to Public Works and see that if there's time. But, um, that's up to you guys. Does that sound nice to you if it fits the schedule?
That would work for, um, you know, having senior staff or just stab, uh, attend, but, you know, it does add.
Time. But it is sometimes nice not to only see the center of town, but also to realize that Orono has a center, but it has outlying areas. It'd be nice to go see Pushaw even and realize that, you know, that's part of Orono. It's a very different part of Orono than what you see when you walk Mill Street and.
Yeah. Depending on her learning style too, it would also be nice for her to have that, that little bit of transit time between meetings, because it's just a little bit of a break from, from the interpersonal sort of intensity of, of having this many meetings all in a row.
Yeah. Um, is there any category that isn't here or anything about this you hate? Or like, I mean, what do people generally feel? And I was assuming that we would have slots that say something generic like business owners, but then that's on us to, and actually, and if staff wants to do that too, to reach out to the people you know, interact most often. As she said, that's important, whoever the people are that interact often, and personally invite them. You know, to say there are slots available. So my next question is, can we put a link on the website that not only says like, here's when the public meeting is, but also go to this link if you are a business owner or volunteer or just a community member who would like to sign up for one of these smaller meetings? And there's like a Google sheet where people can sign up their names? Does that seem dual? Or how are people envisioning this working?
I'm curious, um, Mitch, if you have a pretty decent rolodex of like business owners through economic development, like just, just to send out word. I, I don't know how high it is, but maybe that's just nothing. I, I don't do that. So, uh, if that's nothing, then, then great. Alternatively, if Mitch like has, if he communicates with business owners, I've gotten some stuff from you occasionally. Um, if you can just send out that we, we'd like to, we passed a philosophy bill, we'd like to, like for people to come forward. He didn't, I don't want to make you envy it, I guess, but that seems like a good way to reach out because that's economic development and then.
So in the la, in the email that I sent out about the survey, I said that there were going to be some public, there was going to be some public outreach and I would, I would circle back with times. So I, I can, I can certainly do that. Uh, also have gotten a few, uh, oh, like the, the survey's closed and I didn't get to do this, and my response was, well, there'll be some public meetings and here's who you contact if you want to add information. So, you know, certainly to do that, that's not a.
So Leo, I'm thinking maybe that could be a, not an either or, but a both and. I'm thinking a link is necessary for like the larger public to be able to sign up for open slots. But, um, I'm hoping we could do both. There could be a signup and your email could say like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that's working now. I, we did test it, so.
Yeah.
I have been putting.
It is working. It is working. I'm getting.
Just use that. Yep. If somebody's interested to respond to that, then we'll get an email and put them on.
I, I think if you, from my perspective, but I want to hear from others, I would prefer something that people can just sign themselves up rather than us slotting them into a time, because if there's like three different times for business people or, you know, for nonprofits and volunteer community groups in town, it's going to be a lot to start us managing slotting people in. And which times can you use if they don't tell you in their first email? And I envision that could be complicated, but.
Also complicated though, if you have eighteen different slots on a website, I, I mean, I don't know how many. We've got incredibly efficient schedule, which is, um, you've got a lot of these that'll end up, I don't know how many of these we think are kind of open-ish, but you've got one, two, three, four business owners here, so it's just, it's hard.
Either way you guys, Sarah, someone's going to need to kind of coordinate, because even if it is like a Google form, then you can see when, when people might be available, but somebody still needs to look at that data and get back.
Okay, I didn't envision it as like when they were available. Okay, I didn't envision it as like when they were available. I envisioned it as literally their four slots at nine A M and when they're full, they're full.
Yeah, which would work well, except that if you make that editable, then somebody could. Yeah, it probably makes sense to have a coordinator.
And ideally, there's, well, not ideally, but probably realistically. A dozen would be a great response. So.
Dozen from all the business owner community? Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we had seventeen or thirty.
And the the time slots are gonna be important because most of our business owners are run their business.
That's why I wanted to ask you, what do you think are the best time slots?
If I knew the answer to that, then I wouldn't be able to meet with them regularly.
Well, I just randomly put one like in the morning, two in the morning and two in the afternoon on the hopes that certain businesses had different quiet times, but.
Certainly, most of the your your food service businesses morning is is more available. They're not open. So that you're gonna get that. I mean, it's a, I think if you have a wide slide, you know, variety, you're gonna do the best you can.
I I think you, I think those are good slots in that those are theoretically not rush hours for anybody. Thinking food service, obviously, but I think those are good slots for that and maybe we sort, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to kind of inking those in and putting that in our messaging. We have some time to.
Did you work out what the invitation, what the ask of the invitation is in terms of?
That's what I was just saying. I mean, I think it needs to go out saying, you know, our recruiter is gonna be here. There's a public meeting open to everyone at this time in the evening. There also are small stakeholder meetings and some of the groups she's interested in meeting with are business owners and or we're interested in having her meet with our business owners and you could say, you know, volunteer nonprofit organizations and whatever categories we have. And if you're in one of these groups and you'd like to sign up, here are some designated times. If you're in none of those groups and you still would like a chance to meet with her outside of this public meeting, here are some open times.
You'll cover the, it seems like the who and the when or, I I get it, but what about the why? What's that? How does this inform, how do me, how does?
Your voice matters.
I know it matters and I might, but how does that matter? What is it?
To recruit the best town manager for our town.
Yeah.
To understand what our town is really looking for.
Your perspective on what?
Yeah.
That's that's the why is.
I think. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Already.
But the why is real important. I don't know. I I'll help, but maybe it's helps. But oh, I don't know. I feel like we wanna.
Like a master class on Orno, right? We're trying to, we're trying to.
In two days, she needs to learn everything about Orno.
Just paid in the.
What what unique insight do you have to offer that that we need to know in order to hire like that?
Let's teach a master class on, you know.
So maybe Dan and Matt could work together on the language and we can hopefully have something ready. How soon? Because we'd love to get this out, like Friday? Is ready by Friday realistic? What do you guys' schedules like? Yeah?
Yeah, I guess. I'll do it first now.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
And then staff would want to have input in that too, I would hope. So can you coordinate that with Cornell or Mitch or whoever it is?
Do you want to include four questions? It's a sample so that they're thinking.
Thinking ahead, yeah. That's great. Yeah, but love it.
I I don't like, I I don't like the unique, we're not looking for unique and we just, we just want your help. I want I want to put pressure on.
I don't feel special without for that.
You gotta come up for, you've gotta come up with something really. I think it's just that we we we're looking for help.
Everyone's perspective matters.
Yep.
Yep. Likewise, Mitch, do we have a list or Cornell of the full list of all the various nonprofit groups in town that often collaborate with us on things? I mean, I have a list on the top of my head, but we want to be sure it goes out to all those groups too. Again, maybe in addition to where flyers could go, could people all send to me, like every group you can think of in town that we should be sure to let know in the nonprofit volunteer kind of world? And then I'll send it to Mitch, you may or Cornell who already may know them all, but in case not, and if you have any mail or contact. Because some of the groups are not as always easy to find as others. Does that seem reasonable to folks?
We can. I won't know.
Mitch knows a lot. I can see him nodding back. Yeah, and staff will know, I think. Well, and not like the Orno paddler, who's a like Orno paddlers and. Orno Health Association and the, you know, Orno Land Trust and there's a Orno Housing Association is also a nonprofit. There's a lot of them in town that work with the town.
Yeah.
Some of those overlap in in the context that I have.
Yeah.
So I I mean, some of those are.
They're already in your business list too.
Yeah.
Okay.
We got your business email at the Wilson Center, which I thought was great. I was like, yeah, we're doing it.
Okay. Okay. Did everyone, I I randomly shut those slots couple really early in the morning for the volunteer groups because I didn't know if they're volunteers, if people would want to do that before their regular gig. And then I put a few in an afternoon. Would Mitch, do you have feedback on times on those or anyone have feedback? It was a guess on my part. I put some at like eight in the morning and I, Lucy even said she could do seven thirty if needed.
Overall, this schedule looks looks like really like really good starting place to be at really. She put it together.
So too, and emphasis on anybody that's struggling, we, you know, if we can accommodate, we can. Anybody that's struggling, six thirty, seven thirty is impossible. It's also.
Yeah.
Is the catch-all.
Yeah.
Sometime over the next forty-eight hours, you get a chance to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think it's a reason, pretty decent stat.
Okay. Do people feel okay with Leo and I firming this up with Cornell and like a schedule? Based on what you saw here? Is there something else people want? Feel good about that, Leo? Cornell? Good, okay. Great. I don't know which number we're on on the agenda, Leo. Are you looking? Were you done with this search, the recruiter visit, I'm hoping?
I do want to talk about what we spent a lot of time talking about.
That's search committee. That will come later, right? That's item five. You're thinking of search committee composition, right? Okay. Okay, are we on to survey analysis data? One Phillip, we're good to move there? Go Sonia.
Sure. Over three hundred people ended up filling out the survey. That's lovely. Thanks so much to Keith for sending all of us some of the data already. Send us in your inboxes if you want to see it. I think the question I remember us asking last meeting to kind of circle back around to this meeting was what's what of this data do we want to share with Lisa so that she could use it and make a difference sure and what wants to be used in highlighting Orno? My initial thoughts on that, which cannot be the end all and be all of all thoughts, but they are my initial ones. Is her from question five, like maybe the top three leadership styles. There was kind of a pretty clear breakpoint. There there were three that were pretty heavily preferred. And so some language about and some of the the buzzwords about those kinds of leadership attributes would be great for brochure. From question four, there were kind of the top six priorities. There are like maybe some buzzwords from that set. And that seems like a pretty clear split in the data where like more than forty percent of respondents or more than a hundred people each thought those six priorities were really something that they wanted to see emphasized in terms of areas of excellence. I liked the, I don't know if they need to get included in a brochure or not, but the kind of two-word clouds. Accessible ways to look at those data. And honestly, I don't think there's much else that like we need to get pulled out and used in a glossy brochure. But one additional thing that I'd like to look into with these data, just for our own learnings, is I do want to get sort of access to all the data in just one spreadsheet because I do think it's useful to see whether there was a difference between the general populace versus staff perspectives on what kind of leadership styles those two groups were interested in because you know, ninety percent of respondents were members, were residents. But we had quite a few staff participate enough that I think those data are pretty anonymous and it could be useful to see within staff what is their thinking and be able to kind of just weigh that appropriately. So those are my initial thoughts on the data. Did other people have other initial thoughts on the data?
I didn't. That answered for me what
Yeah.
What would go in the profile, I think, is what's the most immediate and then we can spend a lot more time taking at this data throughout the process, right?
Some of the 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 question, the question that sort of landed itself to some paragraph-long answers, like we could for our own interests at some point, like go through and code those data and really get into a little bit more like what's, what are our, what do people see as the issues upcoming for our town? In a more, in a deeper way, but I don't think that that needs to be in a brochure. I think that's a little bit of a like A, an opportunity for people to tell us what is meaningful to them, which is great. And B, you know, those data are useful for us outside of this search context. So we could table that.
I love the idea. I mean, I know you and Matt have some. But you guys have some expertise in that kind of data analysis and how to code those kind of answers, or I know Sonia does anyway, anyway. And I guess I would really like that because it's fun for me to read through them individually, but I would appreciate if you ever have that time or inclined to actually do that coding and clustering.
Yeah.
And I think I'm curious also about just giving, I'm assuming we can give Lisa access to the raw data the same way we have because one thing she's really been asking for, you know, repeatedly in these questions is what are the big issues? That people see in our community and that's important as I'm working, you know, to recruit people. What are the opportunities? What are the exciting things? What are the challenges? You know, I think getting her that data is important.
I think so. And yeah, she might be interested in reading through the individual responses too, although I do think even just the word cloud, it's sort of a coarse metric for that, but even there, it's like, you know, climate change pops out as a priority, which I don't think is true of all towns. And so that kind of insight into the ethos of our town is probably useful to her.
For me, question, I I I maybe because I'm more aligned with the responses on on question four, but because on on question five, what kind of surprised me was that.
Someone remind me which question is five?
Leadership style.
Styles, got it.
Yeah, we had.
Team leadership competencies, yeah. And just just the what surprised me a little bit about this one was that wait, am I on the right one now?
Are you looking at the ICMA question about the competencies or the leadership styles?
Four now, I meant to be on five. Where was I? The actual question. Town manager's style. Eight leadership styles. Okay, so that's a leadership style, but it the fact that a knowledgeable leader and skilled was it was pretty far down, was only ten percent. But I guess that's that's a that's a leadership style. It does surface on four being an important priority, obviously, number two, so.
Like how competencies are different than styles, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, also the kind of like creative and innovative, like that popped out under the top six priorities too, but also was not a like preferred dominant style. And so I think there's really valuable information in both of those questions that in tandem paint a little bit more of a holistic picture.
Can you read for us what the three leadership styles were and what the six competencies were?
Yes, I can.
That were the top?
The top three. Say yes, I can. Which one was it again? Okay, the top three most preferred leadership categories were the collaborative leader who empowers others, shares decision-making, et cetera. Category two, the adaptable leader who's flexible, responsive, open-minded, growth-oriented, et cetera. And then category four, the ethical leader who solves fair, kind principles, et cetera. So yeah, of those categories, those were the three that really rose to the top. But the
On the competency.
Question. Competency. The top six were integrity and functional and operational expertise and planning, empowering of staff effectiveness. Initiative, risk-taking, vision, creativity, innovation. Budgeting.
Strategic planning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, okay, great. Those seem to me like the best things to highlight in a profile and brochure. Does everyone else agree with Sonia on that or?
One thing, I I don't know, maybe you can talk to Lisa about how they've expressed this in other towns, that while the brochure is to attract, you know, to put us in the best light. Right? I definitely would love to get a town manager doing three years down the road when they're hit with a curveball. Embraces the challenge of that and doesn't say, oh, man, what did I get myself into? Right? So to the extent that we can have a candidate that is looks at challenges as opportunities to, you know, improve their own practice, that I don't know how that gets phrased, but.
Initiative, risk-taking, vision, creativity and innovation. That's that's one, two, three, four. That's, I think that's the fourth one there and that's sort of in there, I think.
I think, you know, that, even that phrasing, I'm looking at challenges as opportunities, if that's that's an important sentiment. We can suggest those exact words to them.
Jeff, I do, I do appreciate your point too about it is a bit like dating, right? Like we want to attract a good candidate and we want one that's a good match that's gonna stay in the long term. It's both of those things, yeah.
So some of this is advice for us on the search community on the backend too, in terms of like, this is what the community expressed. This is how we marketed the opportunity. And I mean, ideally, it's kind of, you could tie it all together, right? We had a survey, we had meetings, this is what we sought out to do. And this is how we ended up making a decision that was kept the commitment to that of what we heard from the people of Orno, right?
I think that's great.
Are we, do we have plans or is there any suggestions about publishing the survey? I mean, I think it, we should.
All the data?
Yeah, put the data out for people to see. I mean, I think it's a kind of fun. I think it's interesting kind of feedback for people.
Sure. Is there a way to do it?
Yeah, so.
We can post it. I mean, we could post it as a council thing, as simple as that, or we could, you know.
Is there any chance that people answered a question?
Yeah.
That it's an anonymous survey that they then would feel like it was outing them to.
Publishing the whole spreadsheet might lend itself to people guessing whether people are in a way that doesn't make sense. But but publishing all of the summary graphics and making the little like here were the results of the town manager search survey. Or here are the initial findings of it, and then we could follow up with another report that's the final one, like once we've done some more fancy analyses of some of the longer form questions. Like that, we could absolutely do pretty quickly and might have really high value in terms of helping educate about the process.
You may have said this, missed it, that when you put this graph, it's, we need the summary and say, this is what we're taking from. Because otherwise, they're just
Yeah.
Yeah, if the if the voice matters, it matters, you're heard. Yeah.
Here, I meant to do this at the, I meant to do this at the beginning, but. I meant to do this at the beginning. It just goes to this. These are your brainstorm from last week about what mattered to us in the process. And I'm, I just transcribed people's literal words like onto the page. And I think that's important because you're bringing back up things that are on here about transparency and making sure it's, things are reported back out and inclusive and the whole.
If we wanted to make a little report, it's like, here's what we learned from the survey and how we're using it for our search process. I can do some of that and welcome others to with me. What what should our internal deadline be for doing a thing like that?
Great. I think for like a splash, I think it'd be nice if we had it for like next Wednesday, go over it Wednesday. We sit Thursday is kind of a Exactly. This is, you know, now how how flesh this out for our, you know, really
Okay.
Texas, the consultant from Texas in.
All right, so we're thinking, we're thinking small blurb and flyers by Friday.
Yeah.
And by next Wednesday. And by next Wednesday, report on the survey, which is another thing that can go out to tease and encourage people to come.
If you gotta walk, you have to walk the timeline first, all right? And that for when, what the different slots are going to be.
Not before the flyers, I don't think, do we? Do we need the every?
The public meeting needs to be set.
Yeah, the public meeting is set. We got that. Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, sorry then.
I will work with Leo and Cornell to try to firm up the schedule as soon as possible, but I think we need to reach out. I'm thinking, we'll work to form up the detailed schedule as quickly as possible, but I think we need an answer, hopefully back from university folks about what slot they want. And maybe RSU folks also may have tight schedules that we want to coordinate around before we lock in the other times. Does that sound right to people? Okay, we'll get on it, Leo.
Yeah, I think worth, I think worth any reach out, like suggesting time slots that we have.
Yes, the ones that we already have.
I mean, a lot of people.
Okay, so report out on survey next Wednesday, some report.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, I wrote, and I'll show you.
Yeah, ideas around here are like, are like, yes.
She can just turn pretty long.
No, I don't think so either.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, okay.
People feel like we can move on to the profile data, which SGR really wants to get back and staff has worked really hard on. And I know Dan's worked on, can we move on to that? Um, I, we have a digital version that went around from staff of an early draft. Dan's got some more stuff. I don't know if staff might also have some more.
Just want to say for the record, my stuff stinks and timestamp at four fifty-five, counting.
Okay, didn't need to trip you, Dan.
Yep.
All right.
Sorry, I unplugged you.
Okay, I'm fine. I got the power. Yeah.
I couldn't find, I found, every time I type mission statement, Orono, I kept coming back to Chris's mission statement for, you know, the big water plant, so I have opened to us. I don't know, we have a official locked-in mission state, do we, for the town? I'm not sweet one.
So these would plug into the open slots that staff had highlighted in yellow? Did everyone also see, Cornell, did you send the brief history around to everyone today at some point or just? Is that something you could print too that people could look at or?
Probably.
Thank you.
Where is the latest version of the rest of this?
Came from Cornell and I re-forwarded it again a couple of days ago. So maybe just yesterday or the day before? Should be one from me yesterday where we forwarded it.
What's the name of the doctor? Is the town manager rev?
Go through Madison, that way you go back. When you go back and forth to go through Madison.
Got it.
Oh, last night, Steve.
Yeah. I went the real back way a couple of weeks ago and there's nowhere to stop the whole life. My kids are like, Dad, we gotta stop, pit stop, pit stop. They're like.
Dan, do you want to walk us through these one by one? Like, should we look at the mission statement first that's here or what does it have to do with these? How do you want to go through?
That's fine. I just, um, on page, I guess.
Oddly, it says.
Three of two.
Of two, yeah.
There's a page, three of four, five, four, six, um, it's mission values, mission, vision, values and goals. So please list for the inclusion of the brochure. And the town council work plan from FY twenty-one didn't ha- had a lot of objectives, but I didn't see it. It didn't really articulate a mission statement, as you typically would see. And again, there's, a lot of our departments have really, I thought, I think well-thought-out mission statements. Um, but I couldn't find one for the town, so I, I took a stab at something based on, you know, this is, um, talks, the second part talks about our service promise. The first part is just to stab it. It's hard sometimes saying, not having something to say, but trying to say it profoundly. And I think I did a great job.
I think it was, I think you did a great job.
Yeah. Especially if we have a key working mission statement.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
And this is, I'll just.
That way we all have to wrangle and wrangle.
Yeah. I mean, this is draft language going to SGR and you're gonna edit also and, you know, with us on that.
All right, well, I'll, I'll stop editing. I think, I think it looks good to you. I just like,
With a PD chain.
By default, go into like heavy living mode. It's like academic things you can't trade with all that up.
Okay.
And I also just, I'm sensitive to not speaking correctly about the references to the ancestral lands of the Penobscot Nation. If someone has a hard edit on that, I would definitely welcome that. I'm not.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wondering about that phrasing and trying to like workshop it in my head. I, I think it's a fine phrase. I also, yeah.
Yeah.
Ca- continue to contemplate.
Okay.
Um, a couple of other things that I thought of that, uh, didn't feel like they were highlighted in here yet. Did we talk about the great schools? The outdoor recreation, um, and the kind of diversity that's brought in by the university. Those to me feel like something that I love.
That, that other, what does that other document that has, that SGR wanted us to pull out, like that graphic and all of that?
This is going into that document.
Okay, all right, because a lot of that stuff should be put in there.
Yeah, if it's, if it, that, if that's in there already, that's great. So I think, thanks so much for putting this together, Dan.
Sure.
I think it's in there, but I think it's important for us as a council to highlight what we think are the most important points for SGR to emphasize in the brochure they're putting forth for us together. So.
Okay, of course, you, perfect. We have things that no, that the South just does not have. We have, I, that we didn't put in, and I'd like to see put in, and that is how many hiking trails do we have?
Right.
In town. We have, we definitely have that, talking about bike trails.
And we're only in mountain from Acadia National Park at Old Lake.
We have, right, we have cycling, uh, I mean, we have, uh, wind, uh, wind trails, uh, Nordic trails in the winter, but, uh, you just right here at the school. And then also, I don't care if we've talked, these are things we can't find anywhere else. We have a very strong Nordic skiing community here. But you can go to Chon, to Nordic skiing communities here. We've got paddling, we've got, you know, community paddling, we've got, uh, high act, we've got canoeing, we've got fishing. There's so many places where you can't do any one of those, let alone all of them in one place. I think this is like, and.
So.
It, it, right out my door, you can go right out your door and go mountain biking, like that is not normal.
So. It's very cool. I agree. It's what's wonderful about here. One of the great things. I wrote great schools, outdoor, a huge, I don't know what the thing is, but lots of outdoor recreation opportunities, extensive outdoor recreation opportunities.
Yeah.
And then Sonia said something else about the diversity of a university community in town. Is that what she said?
Yeah, like I'd say with the university, Orono is surprisingly diverse for a town of its size. And has lots of, uh, like cultural events.
Yeah.
That are a wonderful resource to the community, something like that.
So.
That other.
Well, we're on that document now. So that's what we're on, Matt. So, wait just one second before we, they, on this page, ancestral lands was circled to think about because they're not just ancestral. They're ongoing lands also of the Penobscot Nation. That's a little complicated. Maybe there, is there anything else on here? That was a question mark beyond wanting to expand a little bit more about the things that are great? That's it.
So, yeah, I can take, I'll watch the, for, for word for notes, but you two did. So I'll go back and watch what we just discussed. I'll add it to this and then get it back, Cornell to you, well, to the two of you and copy Cornell on it.
Cornell needs it, yeah.
And if you have a hard suggestion for me on anything particularly around the, um, the ancestral land mentioned, please let me know. I just want to make sure I get it right and I acknowledge that I don't always get, I'm not.
Do you have yours to pass around, Cornell? So, because that also talks about the, the brief history of Orono that, do you have that?
The history thing?
You would just send it digitally?
Yeah, everybody.
So can we look at that also because that also is in this category? And then Matt, let's get way into the weeds on the profile.
That will get people on.
Um, uh, just came by email, correct? So this came from two thousand and ten? Yeah. Um, I mean, it seems very factual about the history. I, I don't know what parts we are most wanting to highlight. Um, I don't even know, again, I have questions if we were to use this, that I would want to put out to the Penobscot Nation or some of our Penobscot consultants. I don't even know, I've never heard the term Tarantine. Named for Chief Joseph Orono of the Tarantine. It's not a term I've ever.
It's a commonly used from sixteen, since sixteen.
Okay, so our historian can fill us in. Thank you. Um.
One thing this leaves out is the really strong contribution of Franco-Canadians to, uh, the history of Orono from seventeen hundreds, but particularly.
Yeah.
It's a little bit like nothing's happened since.
Right, I guess, yeah.
I'm.
A national championship hockey.
Like, this would be a great job for him, could, so Rob is our liaison to the Historical Society. And also is, you may not know this about him, just like a colossal nerd about history of all kinds and definitely Orono history. He like knows this, about the Franco history and, uh, has, has a really good sense of the, uh, Penobscot history and might be a great person to take this and revise it lightly if needed.
And or Jeff also knows a lot on this. Do you and Jeff, do you and Rob feel like you could take this on and?
Why don't I collaborate with Rob?
Yeah. And again, if this is part of the profile info that SGR kind of wants as soon as we can get it to them. Right? So what's a reasonable timeframe, Jeff, by which you and Rob could do something with this?
I will email Rob tonight and I'll text him tomorrow.
Right, okay. I think my feeling we got from our meeting with SGR today is they would love as much profile information as we can send them now. And if there's a blank section, just saying this part will be coming next week. I think that sounded like they could start with what we sent. Does that, do you have the impression, Cornell?
But they're not doing anything.
They will start. They won't finish, but they will start thinking about outlines and, you know, where things will go and what needs to be highlighted. So everything we have available to get to them sooner is good and what needs to wait will wait. Uh, they will not finalize anything till after the community meetings because what would the point of that be when they haven't, you know, yet gotten to hear from what they'll learn during their visit? But they will begin on it now. Um, okay, Matt had some feedback on the actual yellow highlighted profile document?
Yeah.
And maybe photo information too, is that right?
Collecting photos and I don't have a, um, table because I don't have the, um, I have not allowed those photos to be, uh, that folder?
Yeah. But if you got them to Mitch.
But I don't mind, I can email them to you, Mitch, that would make it easier. It's fine. If you're the, I was gonna ask that. So I'm, I, um, there's just the, this looks really good. I just thought that there was some quality of light that we could, you guys might hop to the side where.
What page are you on?
I'm on page, um, one, uh, six, so. It's not a beach, which says quality of light. Second, so it's community information.
Oh, yeah, okay, first page.
Yeah, first page. Um, so it has the community information, which is great, and the quality of light. Um, I, I might add in the solicitor annual, uh, festivals and events, celebrations, the cultural fests of the university and international dance festival, also at the university. Those are two things that are, that happen annually that are culturally important. Um, um, beyond the homecoming and graduation. And then, um, in the tourist attractions, cultural arts, museums, amusement parks. Um, that was, um, I thought maybe we could put the planetarium in because that's not something that is in any communities.
Yeah.
In Maine, except here. Um, Little Field, the technical garden could be added, Mueller Farm, Roger Farm. Uh, even though I, I'm not sure technically they're in Old Town or not some of those, but they're part of the University of Maine, which is in Orono. And so technically they could all use part of the same thing. And this is where I would put in, I know for Maine, people don't necessarily come home, but they can, other community members come here and that's how many cross-country miles of Nordic ski trails. This is where I put that in possibly. And we just, I don't know how many there are, but there's some at the university, there's some here. We could take a wild stout at it, so it's fifty miles.
Is this, you're looking at this section about what makes the community special or where are you, tourist attractions? Okay, got it. All the miles of trails, yes.
So all the miles of Nordic ski trails, the downhill skiing, in a certain amount of range.
Yeah.
And the only reason I put that is that there's a lot, would love to be like one or two hours away from a, some near downhill ski place. And, um, I know it's not in, in Orono. But you just like, in towards it, it's not from that.
Yeah.
You're right. Like I complained about two hours.
Yeah, it's, it's quite like, like, you know, most of.
No, it is a selling point. It's what I'm trying to keep in press to move here. I'm like, it's not, you know, half a year ago.
Um, and then there's so many miles of mountain bike trails. We, I don't know how many there are, but we did ask Jim Rose to give us a.
Estimate?
Fantastic, you know.
Okay.
So this is also, we have hiking trails, all the trails behind the university, all of our land trust trails, the Gharubod trails. We have tons of trails here, um, that, that are just not normal experiences. You just don't find.
Yeah. This is the only place I've, where virtually everybody I know can walk out their door and get to something with, by foot.
I would put this in if it was B, you guys can decide on it's important, but there's open water swimming. Meaning that you can go down still water, you can go to, um, you can go to a lake. It's like literally open water, wild swimming. This is a big draw in Europe, but they not be here. I don't know. And then there's community high, shink, in river, the ant plains, all right. So, yeah, any, man, it's like, it's just like jaw dropping that you can do all of them. The wild for your house. So, uh, you're convincing me to move here. All right, so.
He's definitely the one who should drive people around, yeah.
You'd be special. I would add to what, what's there, but I would be one of the safest towns, even safest state in the Union. Like, how, like, I don't know why we don't, this is incredible how safe Maine is and how safe Orono is. I mean, I don't know what the statistics are, but they've got, this has got to be like for its size, one of the safest places in North America. But so I think that's incredible. If I was the only person I was like looking at it, and this is where you might put the school statistics.
Right.
It's incredible. It is a community of volunteers. I would put that in. And the volunteer groups that we have are the Orono Powers, the Orono Man Trust, uh, the Historical Society. I, I don't know what else, uh.
Eighty percent reclamation rate on our recycling?
Yeah.
That's for you, Jim, if you're watching.
Eighty-four. I know this sounds bizarre, but we have an in-town school within walking distance.
It's a big deal.
And that's a big deal. Like most towns, I build a, a school, way to tag out somewhere because that's where the land is. And we have a great unit that we can practice, it's a part of the community. That's a selling point for people. So I would put those in. Um, and so, um, those were the major things that I saw. Everything else was free and I have nothing to say.
Just, uh, so.
Yeah.
Are you putting those in?
Uh, I have them here in this, in this, I don't know.
Um, can you do that and send it back?
I can send it back to who? I send it back to?
Leo and I and Cornell, right?
I will send it back. I have them in my. I will send it back. I have it in my words there. So they'll need to be changed because I, I don't have all that, but I'll look up the trying to the miles. And then we can decide whether we need to move, move some of them one place.
Does anybody have any objections to any of the things Matt wanted to add? They all sounded terrific to me. I did move here, by the way, for most of those reasons.
Well, I love it here. I absolutely love it here and, and like. There just isn't very many places.
Maybe, you know, it's not that we need anything more too, but the uh, the youth statistics for the library are off the charts.
That's true. Yeah, youth statistics for library.
And we could even put the, that, you know, we're looking to expand our, our totally pocket library as.
Right. Did you say use or youth, Jeff?
Oh, I said use.
Use, like how many people use our library? Yep, that's great. And I did um, reach out to um. Chairman of the school board who I know um, and asked about the school statistics and I have a link. Um, he said, you know, there's a niche dot com site that we can quote as the current ratings for the RSU. Um, they're currently rating the middle school number one in the state and the high school number seven. It goes up and down on different years, but we're always in the top. Ones. So that's something we can cite and send to SGR if they want to use it.
Yes.
That sounds really good.
I can get that to you, Matt, the link and the quote.
Can't see why we'd hide that.
Like if you were an outdoor fan.
Right. Yes. Alright, so Matt, you're gonna write that up and I actually would say send it to all of the council and to Cornell. Just because I think we'd all like to see it. It sounds great. Lovely to have that draft. Uh, Orno Land Trust. Um, Jim Rose, I don't know about the bike. What else, Mitch?
We can look into that.
Tom can look into that. Thanks. So. It seems like before we send this to SGR then, we're gonna let Matt do a little bit of adding stuff in and then a draft will go to SGR.
I'll try and have it done by. May or spring.
Okay. We all feel good about that?
Call me with like numbers if I can't get them, but I know you're busy. We'll try and.
We can look into the numbers of lengths of trail, that sort of thing. We, we may have it.
So you're gonna. Edit. The work document?
Uh, what I'll do is I will put them in, in a different color. In there, so it'll be there and then you guys can see what I've added to make sure.
And, and you're gonna have Dan's.
Dan's text in also that this, these ones go into these sections. Can you have this also?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bake edits based on more spirit tonight and I'll send back to you.
Into that word.
Okay, but so the goal would be, we would have a first draft of this that can go out to SGR. It sounds like by Monday at the latest. And then if there are still some pieces getting worked on, like the brief history that doesn't come until later in the week, that'll be fine. Does that feel good to people? And I love this idea of a love letter to Orno, by the way. I really think that's a nice thing for like recruiting people to our meeting too. Like come help us write this love letter about our amazing town. That's gonna go out and help people, you know, know how wonderful we are and that they might like to work here. So thank you for that. Okay. Are we good? On the profile? Excellent. Okay, what is left? Search committee. What time are we at? We have fifteen minutes, so this will be an initial discussion. I took notes doing to summarize what I have from our discussion and you jump in Leo or how do you wanna, okay. Um, so. On the larger search committee, which by the way, we have been, I've been collecting names of people volunteering to serve. And I think we're up to twelve or thirteen already who have volunteered. I'd have to look to see over ten at any rate. Um. And so in discussion with Lisa around that. Um. So they, they typically advise and Leo, get me if I'm off. They typically advise that a couple of things. Um, whoever is involved in the larger committee, they would recommend that that is very clear to those folks that this is an advisory role that they're in. We've talked about this before, but the real importance of people understanding that what they're volunteering for is to be. An advisory panel that advises us, the council, who will make the actual decisions at each step of the process about. Which people are invited to be semifinalists, which people are invited to be finalists, which final candidate is chosen. That the role would be an advisory one. Um. They also recommended clearly that we're real clear, as we've talked about before, on the non-disclosure agreements upfront with everyone being crucial. Because candidates' information is important to be kept private and I know we've talked about that. Um. As far as how that advisory role would work. Um, they don't recommend having fifteen people in a room all simultaneously trying to talk about a pile of candidates. They would recommend that the advisory, uh, for example. Um, as moving from the semifinalist to the finalist stage where we're trying to take ten to fifteen people and decide which two to five to invite. For person interviews. Um, that that advisory panel of might be eight to ten people who would have an initial discussion about all the. Information they've seen, the resumes, the question answers, the written answers, and we would literally as a council be flies on the wall in the room. Just listening to this. This is the level where they said.
Or no, I mean, I think they also suggested that that. That that group kind of.
They could meet completely individually. They could meet completely individually and Lisa be the only person there taking notes and reporting back to us. Or. They could meet and council could simply be there to listen uh, to what their ideas are and opinions are and thank them for their time and then. Move into our own discussion where we make a decision at that level. So there were two models. One is the advisory group meets with only Lisa there taking notes. And she reports back to council. The other model is council's a fly on the wall, listening and nodding and taking notes and thanking people and then doing the same thing. Moving into our own discussion to make that level of decision. Um. It's also possible not to have an advisory panel at all, but it seemed to me like we're way beyond that stage as a council where we've seemed to be pretty clear that we want one. Um. So those were the three options that I heard. And then the other thing that Leo and I heard was that. That advisory role could happen at every level of the decision-making process or only at some of the levels of the decision-making process, correct Leo? Um, there are three levels. There's the level where we go from every applicant that applies down to the semifinalists. That's the first reduction level. The second level is from the semifinalist to the finalists. And then the third one is obviously the day of the interviews when they're here and all the interview, you know, finalists, we pick one.
Was probably in that second. It was not like a look at all of them. I, I think that was. She was recommending that not to look at the every thing and, and, and probably more reasonable engagement. Time would be when they were down as a target.
Right.
Whatever it is, after the first phase, uh, they would. They've received the book.
Right.
And. Go through narrowing that, that smaller group down to a smaller group.
Yeah. I think it's true that, um, I think both you and she were in favor of perhaps the advisory panel is only part of going from semifinalist. To finalists and then from finalists to final candidate, those two stages. Um, and I was more inclined to be, I'm happy to have them in the first one also where we go from the total list of candidates down to the semifinalists. Um. And I think it's really a question for council. I do think first, if anyone has an objection to this basic model that. Um, we should talk about that, but I mean, the basic model presented being that the. The larger advisory search committee would. At some levels anyway, at some stages. Have a discussion and talk about where they think they should go. Can we start with that? Like, do people have opinions about the, Lisa takes notes and we're not there. Versus council is in the room listening and taking our own notes and then leaves. I think that's the first question, really.
Do we have access to the raw? Data as well in terms of like the resumes and stuff?
All of that, we all have to. Well, I mean, we have everything they have.
Yeah.
Um, it's just like a two-tiered process because she doesn't believe that sixteen people talking simultaneously is easy to manage.
Yeah.
It's better to have eight or ten talking and then eight or ten talking, right?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't much, uh, I'm two minds of it because I, I wouldn't mind being in the audience and listening to that, but at the same time. Does it create a different experience for some of us if we can't all be in it in terms of. Yeah, if three of us can be there, but four of us can't, does that mean that they don't have the same and then only get the benefit of the, the. Memo. But I, I'd like to, I, I'd like it. I'm happy to be talked out of it, but I mean, I like the idea of listening to the. I learn and think when I listen to people and.
Other folks on this thing?
I wonder if the um. Community volunteers. Might feel.
Watched it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think they'd feel watched by us, but I, they might feel that they have more autonomy, like they might feel that they have more authority to, to make. Good decisions if they're sold, right? Like.
I think that it's important, which she indicated to emphasize that they're not actually making decisions. Then all they're doing is saying, here's our thoughts.
They are, right, but they are making, they are having deliberations.
But I also. Because I might hear something that, that's not.
And at least. Obviously, these wouldn't be zoomed because these are at the point where the person, okay, good.
No, I don't know if we actually answered.
Transparency ends at that point. Yeah.
Yeah, no, you mean publicly zoomed out. Yeah, no, these are like talking about actual applicants. These are executive session, kind of closed room meetings. And right, non-disclosure agreements. Um, I think what Matt said, do you wanna go? Cause I had something to say from what Matt said. That just sparked for me. Firstly, I would like to be there because no matter what the reduction is, I feel like each of us as counselors who's there might hear something different. From a community member that really matters to us in our decision-making process, which could be very different than what matters to Lisa or the short version. And I think that's a good thing. Like I like that the diversity of having this advisory panel, the point of it for me is for as many. Voices to be heard as possible. And I think as many sets of ears hearing those voices will hear different things. So I like it. I do hear what you said about maybe not all of us could be there, but I'm hoping this only happens, I mean, three times, the day the interviews are live. People here are being interviewed and two times before that. So I would hope we could plan those on a day and prioritize them as a council so that. Most of us could be. But that's me. Sonya, your turn.
I think my thoughts are similar. I. Would like to be a fly on the wall and try to absorb as much nuance and insight about the candidates as possible as the first. As one of the people tasked with making the final decision. And so. Not looking for more things to do, but willing to throw down and, you know, make a priority out of this a couple of times. It feels like. Really important part of our role and our responsibility to um, take it as serious as.
I, I think I like, I like. Kind of giving them the autonomy to sort of conduct their thing and do their thing and not be. Not be the flies on the wall. Um, I don't know. I, I do think that. Maybe not, maybe they don't act differently, differently or feel differently with us kind of watching. And that feels a little, a little strange to me, us being in the room. Probably wanting to say stuff maybe and, and not speaking. Um, I would, I think I would prefer to have them. Do the, do, do the task at hand on their own and we see themselves.
So maybe we're a little bit split on that. Um. Two to four-ish kind of split sounding like. I know we don't vote in committee meetings. Um.
I would put both camps, I guess I would say, so.
So we're two and a half to three and a half?
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so we are three to three. Um, I don't know. I'm just asking because I think it's a question we need to answer as we're moving forward and. You know, scheduling how this is gonna work.
Ask them what their preference was too.
I fully like want them to know that I. Trust them too. So. I see where Leo's coming from, but I also don't know if we're there or not, whether that.
In the end, their role is wrong. I mean, in the end, their role is to convince us. I mean, to be really clear, like that's what an advisory. Panel's role is, is to try to convince us about what matters to them and why they think it's important. Um, and so, you know.
So. So then you get into, okay, if we're there, if we're in there, we're listening, we're listening to the two individuals that we. Are mostly tuned in with versus the end result of the committee.
I don't know if there is an end result. Like I'm not at all sure that they are. I don't think they're asked to say like, this is the person that. I mean, I think it's supposed to be a broader amount of feedback.
If they're though, if we have twelve, then they might say, okay, here's the five that we've arrived. So that might be.
I would hope we would get more than that, that we wouldn't just get, here's the five we've arrived at, but here's actually what we liked about candidate number one. And here's what we liked about candidate number five, and here's what we liked about ten. Personally, I would hope to get all of that. Because in the end, if all we get is that we want one, two, three, four, five. And we don't choose one, two, three, four, five, that's gonna make people feel really crappy. I mean, that's not what I would wanna see. I would wanna see a format where what comes to us. Has more nuance than that with the understanding that. You know, maybe they're giving rating scales to people or something that we see. But again, we don't have that detail, level of detail from Lisa yet. But I think what I don't wanna have is a situation where people feel like we recommended numbers one through five and you chose numbers. Six through ten, that's, you know, doesn't build a good. Feeling going forward.
Yeah.
So we may not have consensus on this one as we're nearing the end of our time. Um. I think that we need to really spend next Wednesday. Delving into this further, like what we want to see for this advisory search committee role. Um. Leo and I will have another conversation with Lisa next week, but we don't have a day or time for that yet. So I'm not sure if that'll be before or after Wednesday's meeting. Waiting on Leo, Leo. Cornell's waiting on your schedule. He's pointing at you. Um. And I think the second part that we'll need to discuss next week is. Um, regardless of whether we are flies on the wall or we're getting a report back. Do we want this advisory group's feedback twice? Like when we go from the full list to the semifinalists? And when we go from the semifinalist to the finalist? Or do we only want it once in the process? And maybe we're flies on the wall for one of those if we do twice and we're not for the other one. I don't know. Um, I think Lisa felt like the first one is typically a group that's. Um, she, she seemed to feel that decision's fairly obvious a lot. Who gets invited to be semifinalist, she said, is, is usually quite clear and there seems to be pretty good consensus. And that typically what she tells council or the decision-making body is anybody that anybody in any individual wants to see move forward will move forward. Even if it's just Leo who loves person twenty-three and it's just me who loves person thirty-eight, those two move on to the semifinalist stage.
So do you think that should be extended to this?
It could be. It could be. You talked to Lisa about either way on that.
You, you think? Because then you've got. Seven plus eight, ten, twelve, like. Select choices that go outside of the, I mean, I think we're likely gonna be in the tier one, two, tier one, two, probably, right?
Yeah.
Be within there. Now, she did say, yeah, someone likes something outside of that. I think that.
I don't know if that would be extended to the other group, that anyone they liked automatically moved on. I don't think so because I think council makes the decision. So as we come, as we convene next week, I'll send a little email out that summarizes what these questions are about the advisory committee. And we can really focus in on those next week because I think that's really important for us to firm up. Um, with Lisa, we're hoping to firm up actual dates um, in our next discussion about more of this process. Cause I don't think we can ask volunteers to volunteer until they know what days they're committing to. If they know they're gonna be out of town a certain week, it's not gonna work for them. So I'm hoping council.
But. Those would be, they're, they're a month off from when we started at least, but they're five weeks off from the.
Yep. Yeah, so. To people feel comfortable with us focusing in on this first next time and I'll send a little email summarizing what the questions are in between.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else we were really hoping to get out of tonight, Cornell?
We have a public comment.
I don't know. Do we have any of the members of the public? We should have. Good point. Should've told me on that sooner, Dan. Sorry.
There are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you.
Very political way to say nobody's watching, right?
Very polite.
Last time there were people watching.
No one was raised. I just wanna say thank you to you all.
A great job.
That was a lot of material and thank you all and really for volunteering to step up and do these pieces because I don't think Leo and I could do this. So, and thank you to Mitch for having all the information at his fingertips and for all the staff who worked with you on this detailed profile information.
Yeah, I think we're great.
Big job, Leo.